Thank you.
It's for those benefit.
To do what Sarah just summarized is no small feat. Just ask the Patriots. They never did it. With Tom Brady, by the way. But that podcast I found extremely valuable and moving. I think any team that was interested in having any kind of level of success would do well to watch that because the captains laid out why you guys were so successful as a team. And you might not realize it right now, but I'll tell you 20 years from now, you'll be like, oh yeah, we had it going on. With that, I'll shut up.
So Alyssa Snow, is Alyssa here this evening? Bracey Stevens? Cecilia Hornicle? Marissa Anastagio?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Doda?
Oh, sorry.
Great job.
Thank you.
Kira Moynihan?
I think Kira was the Player of the Year.
Wow! Delaney Sleeper? And Carmen Clark? Cameron. And did we get everyone that's here? We had another pile.
It's just us.
That's it, okay. So we have the rest of the team here. So we'll make sure that we send those along. And maybe can you just, let's have the coaches?
One other quick note. Didn't C.C. Hornicle also get an achievement?
She did. First team Allstate along with Kira and Metal True.
And Metal True.
Allstate and Marissa Anastagio.
And Marissa.
So let's give you a round of applause. Congratulations. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Terrio with his student representative update. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
So this Saturday, the high school Lakeshore Music Festival will be held at Laconia High School. We have a couple of students participating in both the band and the jazz band, and I believe also the chorus as well. Recently, the Laker Bots kicked off their season. We're working towards our first competition in March. Math team has a virtual meet coming up this Thursday. There's over 10 students who will be competing. There is an eighth grade parent night on January 22nd from 6:00 to 7:00 in the library. Auditions for Willy Wonka Jr. were yesterday evening and this evening as well. And performances will be on April 11th and 12th. And then there's a basketball doubleheader against Molten Borough on January 28th. The boys will play at 4:30 and the girls will play at 6:00.
Excellent. Thank you, Caleb. And Caleb, you are excused so that you can learn to drive and be responsible.
No, Caleb, no, really? That's exciting. Thank you, Caleb.
Next up, we have Mrs. Moriarty, who's going to be inviting us on the enrollment report.
So I think you have the minutes before we?
Oh, I missed that. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You have minutes. We have minutes.
So if you go to page three of the white pages, page three, you have the start of the minutes.
One correction on page eight. I'm reasonably certain that Ms. Twaddell III did not second. You did not make a difference.
Thank you for that. We will make that note.
Hey, it's 20:25.
Hey.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes. Some will amend it.
Some amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The end of the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Current bills payable.
Those are on page 11.
Of the white?
Of the white sections.
And it's manifest 3015. And I do apologize, the cover sheet was missing. The total is on the third page of that manifest, though. And the total is $723,530.91. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions for Ms. Dolph? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we're at the enrollment report.
And that is on page 14.
Questions about the enrollment report?
It's like changing three students.
Which relative to recent years, we've had a lot less movement this year, doesn't it seem?
It's, it's always staying more flat.
Yeah, but still in a year, you've come down from 988. On that, oh, June of 2020.
Yeah. Yeah, June of 2024 was 928. June of 2020 was 1,006. And I, it's not unusual. Most schools saw a fluctuation that have yet to recover from COVID.
Really?
Yeah.
Great. Anything else on that? Hearing none, staffing update?
Page 15. And just to give a little context, we are, so open positions for parent educators in the district is six right now. Last June, we ended the year with still open positions. We had 11 at ILEs, three at Sandwich, and nine at the Middle High. So I think you'll see that we're in a significantly better position. And custodians last June, we were, we had five openings. And as you see, we still have four openings. So we haven't had much improvement there.
Do you have any idea why it's so hard, Mary, to find parent educators?
You know, I am hopeful that, again, our contract has had significant improvements. I, I think, I think just a little more time, that will catch on and those will be filled. I mean, again, significantly better than where we were. And I would attribute that to the wages.
And I would say.
As a retention tool as well.
My amateur observation that COVID, while a number of teachers left the profession, I think way more parents left the profession.
There's a lot of competition in the area as well, like Trent Bible or a seminary every day.
Yep.
Parent educators wanted, limits parent educators wanted, you know, so.
Are the contracting agencies, for lack of a better term?
So we do do that. So.
But are they offering better wages, et cetera? So like we had a conversation at some point where
Yep.
somebody just went across the street?
Yep. That is, that's real competition as well. And what I would say, some of those agencies, you are working probably with the most challenging students, which is not something everybody wants to do. So it's not, you know?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Dolph, year-to-date financial report. Page 16.
Thank you. On page 16 is your year-to-date financial report. Total year-to-date expended plus incurred is $33,500, basically. And we have available about $1.6 million. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions for Ashley? Okay. Next up, donations. Light it up Lakers campaign donations. Does anybody have papers up? I don't think they do. This is just the list I have here. It's in the agenda.
Yeah.
It's number 10 on the agenda, just donations.
And so we, I would like to entertain a motion to accept donations from the following individuals and entities. Mr. and Mrs. Cardier in the amount of $1,000. Mr. and Mrs. Cocaine in the amount of $100. The Hackett family in the amount of $150. Mr. and Mrs. Hayward in the amount of $451. InterLakes Automotive in the amount of $100. The InterLakes School Board, which I might mention that all seven members of the school board donated for this effort, came up with a total of $2,570. InterLakes Grandparents Club in the amount of $456.35. Joe Boxer Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $625. And Jessica Khan and Netflix in the amount of $18,810.90. The McClair family in the amount of $2,000. The Mug in the amount of $700. Silent Auction in the amount of $95. And Thomas &amp; Son Artesian Well Company in the amount of $2,000.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second. Any other discussion? And we thank them with gratitude, by the way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? All good. Then we have another anonymous donation in the amount of $513.96 to be used to pay for boys varsity basketball team warm-up jerseys for the entire team. Which is pretty cool.
You can get that for $513.
Got to guarantee first.
Jackets and.
Move to approve?
Motion.
Okay. Thank you. Second. Second if I add? Any other discussion? And this is with gratitude as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Now, new business. Sandwich open enrollment process. Mrs. Moriarty.
So if you turn to page 17, and Mr. Hilger and I are going to connect with you on this together. One of the things, you know, our district has had that residents, if you live in Sandwich, you can go to ILEs. If you live in Meredith or Center Harbor, you can go to Sandwich. We've had that open enrollment within the InterLakes School District. We have seen some increase in people taking advantage of that. And one of the things that we want to be able to do is make sure that we're thinking ahead. We do have full-day kindergarten now in Sandwich with first grade, so that that's a K1. So it's a primary multi-age. And we want to make sure that we don't overrun that class and also be cautious that we don't fill it to its capacity and then have no space should there be a kindergarten student or a first grader who moves into Sandwich. And one of the benefits of an elementary school is we want closer proximity to home for younger children. So what we are proposing is that Mr. Hilger will host in April a primary multi-age welcome night, go through the registration packet. Families will have until May 16th to fill out the packet and return it. Then starting in May, using, our policy says 25 would be the cap for a primary age classroom. So using though as a cap here of 22 to allow us to have three seats available should we have some folks who've been later in the year from Sandwich. So the first thing would be prioritizing Sandwich residents. Then the next priority would be looking at siblings who are already have, you know, siblings are present at SES. And then third would be looking at students who haven't had a connection yet, who live in Center Harbor or Meredith. And we'd be using a lottery system in those cases.
Is that lottery and just the year? Just the year that they're in?
Yes, yes. So, so this would be for K1 that we would be looking at. And then, you know, should there be, you know, a substantial number of students, you know, I think those are, that don't fall under this category in terms of the seats. You know, those may be conversations that the board would entertain, possibly doing something different. But right now, we have one primary multi-age teacher out there. And we have to think about it as we have 25 seats for K1. Mr. Hilger has been trying to do some projections. You have those down below, what our current enrollment is, what we're anticipating as well. So again, it is a K1 classroom that we are looking at. We're not looking for the board to take any action this evening. Our hope is that in February you will, so that we can put this in place. But certainly if there are questions or more information that you think would be helpful for us to bring forward, we certainly would appreciate those questions so we can prepare and get those to you.
Questions for Mary. It's nothing you have them all now, so take them at any time.
It's just interesting because I think a lot of people go to Sandwich for kind of the smaller classroom. And then this year, you're having a kindergarten and first grade class with 23 students, which is significantly larger than what they have at ILES.
Correct.
And a lot of outside residents trying to probably go there for the thought that they're going to get into a smaller class. That is true.
Yes. Sandwich tends to run larger class sizes.
Yeah.
And they are multi-age classrooms.
Other questions regarding this? All right, hearing none. We're moving on to the next item. InterLakes Middle High School, 25-26 program of studies. Mrs. Moriarty, Mr. Connell, and Dr. Downey.
So we have before you, you have a summary of changes to the program of studies, as well as you have the full program of studies. And the summary begins on page seven, I'm sorry, page 18. I think one of the things, you know, we're going to be talking later about the budget. You know, the program of studies and the budget are intertwined. The reality is what we are proposing in terms of changes is not, has no staffing changes. Should the board decide that you want to, you know, have the budget reduced, you know, that could have an impact on staffing, which could have an impact on what we have for offerings. The reality is it's hard because the stuff runs kind of simultaneously. We have eighth graders and their families getting ready to talk about becoming ninth graders. And the scheduling process is, you know, takes a substantial amount of time trying to work out a schedule that's going to have the most opportunities for students. It's, you know, kind of like a big puzzle trying to fit it all together, you know, when you offer anatomy and versus when you offer pre-calculus, like some of those things. So that takes some time in the spring to be able to prepare those pieces. So we at least need a first draft that we are able to bring forward to families to look at. But recognize through the budget process, that may change. I know that Mr. Connell has a few kind of overarching thoughts for you to have for the program of studies or the summary?
Sure, yeah. Yeah. And thank you, Mary. So as you can see, there weren't really a ton of major changes programmatically. That being said, the program of studies really kind of represents a standard scope and sequence for most students. We, of course, do personalize on individual basis if kids seem to be accelerated or have a slower pace. Sometimes I have eighth graders who might take a high school course depending on their level. But most of the courses remain the same. As you can see on the, an exciting opportunity on the back, the Windswat Mag Center is offering three new programs. They just renovated into a whole new building this past year. So that's, that's kind of a bigger change that students might have an opportunity to do. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you.
So the removal of music from elementary, kindergarten, whatever, wherever we normally start through grade where?
So the removal of the music explorations course? Is that what you're?
It just says remove and no longer, and will no longer be an elective course.
Yeah, so that, that is, that's typically elective at the high school level, grades nine through 12. So it only impacts high school students. So that, but Mrs. Iain will not be offering that next year.
So that summary, this only pertains to our nine through 12.
Ah, okay. Yes. I'm sorry for that, Miss, yeah.
And that, that's some good feedback for us to think about putting on our, our song.
Yeah, we're not removing music from the whole district, sorry.
Well, I was going to say it'd be really interesting as to how you're going, how a grade eight students are going to be able to participate in bad courses, jazz band, if they haven't had any background in music part of that.
Yes. Yeah. That would be a challenge.
Is this not being removed just because of the lack of kids wanting to do it, or?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sure that, I mean, this is, do you, do you have guidelines about if fewer than this number of students sign up, then we won't run the class? I mean, I assume this is everything that's offered, but they don't all get taught because some of them don't have enough of a sign up. And so, I mean, I know there are times when you have to offer something, even if there are only a few kids in it, because it's the only option for somebody to do something. But is there a cutoff for how many kids in the class?
Yeah. It's a great question. So the, the schedule is very much student-driven based on what they're selecting. We strive to have, I think our number you could say is about 10 kids in each class. That's our goal. But we definitely do look at if there are electives or courses that have lower than that, that is a consideration if we run it, if we don't, do we combine a class? But 10 is kind of the number we're typically looking for.
Thank you. So the reality is there are far more courses that are presented in this program of studies than it could possibly run. Some departments try to schedule it, like we offer it on even years, we do this, on odd years, we do that. Others will leave, here's all the electives we offer. And students are going to decide by their feet what they're signing up for, which ones run that, that's year. So it is definitely driven by students. And there are courses that don't end up running.
Other questions or comments?
On the, on this part of the discussion?
Yes.
I want to be called to speak at the finance, or the personal finance and economic?
Yes, I've been trying to make that connection. So I want to, maybe Mr. Connell, you could help follow up with Mrs. Sullivan. I think, first of all, finance is a requirement by the state of New Hampshire. It is a half-credit or full-credit up there?
So, yeah. So this, the way Mrs. Sullivan runs her class, it's a one-credit course. Half of it is the economics component, and the other half is personal finance. So by taking that course, you're meeting both graduations.
Because it's a half-credit required in economics and a half-credit required in finance. And yes, you should speak at that. I might go that day.
I can help facilitate that. If you're going to talk to it? Sure.
Anytime else? So then, at this point?
We would hope the board would consider making a motion to approve it, but it is understood, there's, you know, the budget process. You may decide if you want to reduce X amount from the budget, which might mean an impact on programming. So that is understood. So I think it's, what's being approved is that we can move forward, at least with conversations, but recognizing that this is a nimble process.
I'd be comfortable with that, advancing.
It is stated.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Is there, is there a similar summary or discussion over elementary education below grades nine through 12?
No. We have the program of study at the elementary level.
Oh, we said this goes through nine to 12, you said?
Yeah.
Correct. So everything else below that is very?
Is kind of follows.
Seven and eight are in here, though.
So seven and eight has their, my kids are in here, correct?
Yeah.
But like in terms of, like, you know, you have grade one, they have reading, writing.
This is what we're doing.
Correct. They don't have, they don't have choices.
Yeah, 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 no, but.
We do have.
As a board and as a district, we have choices as to if this is going to be offered or this is not going to be.
So again, there are minimum standards. We have to make sure we're meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, that's a good question, even though I seconded this. I was, like, brought up, we were talking about some, like, the world culture classes and stuff. So proving this doesn't mean that that stuff is not going to be discussed or eliminated, right?
Correct. Correct. This is, this is really impacting nine through 12, and the electives are spelled out, correct, for seven and eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a basic overview of seventh and eighth grade programming and what it looks like.
Fair. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve this with the caveat that it's subject to change with the budget process. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Dr. D. Next up, informational item. And just to get the temperature of the rest of the board. Leadership has discussed this. Ed and I and Mary met and talked about some of these legislative initiatives and the, what we could do that might be meaningful. Kind of came up with a fact that a place to start. And this has been tried before, been talking with, I think Mark and I talked about this last Friday. But over the years, we're going to reach out to our local state reps and just try to have a meet and greet. And just to try to bring them up to speed on, this is who we are, and these are some of the challenges we face. Don't know, there's just no specific legislation pending or anything, but we may, depending on how things go with some of our other initiatives, it might be help, that could be, something that could be helpful down the road. So unless somebody had major objections, we're going to proceed with setting up a meeting.
It's a great idea.
Okay. Mary, you want to talk about strategic plans?
Sure. So page 68, your very last page of this rather large agenda. Goal is to have a strategic plan by January 2026. So this is certainly for discussion, but just trying to have had a conversation with school board member Twaddell and Chair Hanson. Trying to look at it as a few phases here. Phase one, you know, really looking to get stakeholder input on the vision of the district in the next five years. What does it people want the district to look like in five years? What would be measurable outcomes of reaching that vision? Looking to really engage all stakeholders in that through surveys, community-based listening sessions. Really want to try to get some feedback, significant feedback from our graduates who have graduated within the last five years. I think, you know, whenever I, I see a graduate, I try to always ask the question. And it'd be good to be able to do that in some kind of more authentic and significant way so that we can actually use that to make, make decisions. Looking at from mid-June to August 31st, looking at a small writing group to really kind of take that information and try to design a draft strategic plan. September to October, share that draft back to the community of stakeholders. November, that group meets to kind of, to review the feedback and see how that might have an impact on updating the strategic plan. And then bring to the board for consideration in December, a strategic plan. And, you know, we had proposed something last year. Certainly last year was a unique year. It was also very time-intensive with a lot of subcommittees. I think this is a much more doable process. And so certainly for, to bring, you know, to the board for discussion this evening, it certainly is something that you can discuss, you know, in February. Like to start trying to at least map out what those stakeholder opportunities are so that we can leverage, like the public hearing, leverage the annual meeting to try to, again, just get out to the community that these are opportunities. And my hope would be that they would be in each community and that board members would be able to attend some of, you know, maybe not all of them, but maybe, you know, with every board representation at each one.
Are we bringing in an outside consultant to run the strategic plan analysis?
So I, I think it's something we can do as a small group. I don't know that, you know, I think that if we find that we need some additional help, I think the listening sessions, maybe having an outside facilitator will be helpful for that. But I think a small writing group can really power through this.
I think there needs to be a dialogue. Obviously, the demographics that they were looking at on the strategic plan for the town is a different demographic. But there's also some of the forces of.
But there's also, uh, some of the forces of that structure.
Yeah.
No harm in reading it, it's online.
Yeah.
And it is acknowledging two things. We're getting too old. And we're, 90% of the respondents, if they could incorporate in conservation.
Yeah.
Into their thinking and how important it is, whether it's wildlife and habitat protection, trails. So no, that was a big conversation.
And I think it might be looking at like trying to do surveys and trying to get graduate feedback, we may have to reach out to some consultants to help us do that. So I, I think that there's opportunities to, to get some bandwidth we'll need it.
Right. Other questions for Mary? All right.
I will bring this back in February.
Okay, so we can keep these?
Yes, absolutely. These are yours.
Next up, we get to the 800 pound gorilla room. That would be the budget.
All right, everybody should.
In your notebook.
Should have a lovely binder and it'd be nice to pull our administrative team folks up to the table, see if people can grab your binder and join the table. Binders out of the way, it's something that you do best with some buildings.
But it's had it on the phone last two years.
Ready to pass, didn't sign up last year.
It's a, it's a draft.
Well, we, we just forgot to sign up. It's a tribal writer campaign, Jim Heikle, who Sandwich is monitoring. Got 38 votes in Sandwich.
That was way more than I expected.
When you've got a writing, people know somebody, um, he was so surprised.
I'm sure he was.
He's the town meeting moderator and I guess I'm gonna be the school board moderator too.
All right, so everybody can turn to, um, the budget overview tabs, you have a budget overview tab. I am going to try to walk us through that. And I, I find that this is just a really helpful way of framing the budget, um, and hope that you will find this summary useful. So the reality is our operational budget is $35,238,095. This reflects an increase of $1,846,619, um, or 5.53% over last year's budget. Um, this budget, uh, supports what we're proposing right now maintains current staffing levels, um, across the district. It does include, um, some increase in staff, staffing. Uh, .625 is being proposed for an Interlake School High School Student Services Coordinator. So, uh, if you recall, you supported being able to add that between now and the end of the year. We are looking at that as a part-time position and an increase of 6.33 paraeducators. The reality, the 6.33 paraeducators are the staffing level we're at now in terms of being able to meet, um, special education needs as well as some regular education needs. So although it is an increase from last year's budget, it is a reality of what we need to operate. There are three drivers of this budget. Uh, health and dental insurance has increased $710,471. Special education services has increased $619,029. Transportation has increased $214,424. Uh, they total about $1.5 million of the proposed 1.8. You know, the remaining is, you're gonna see that in wages, it was only in the third year of a teacher contract. So those are making up some of that difference. So health and dental, here's the reality. We are in year two of the double-digit increase, 16.9%. Um, this has been significant for us. We are planning this spring to have a study to look at health insurance options. This will include the SAU, it will include Interlake School District, it will include Ashland School District. We will be looking at, um, all vendors who do municipalities and schools. So Health Trust is our current provider, another provider is school care, another one is interlocal. We will also be asking the question, well, what if we're just a small business, if you looked at it that way? Um, so we have contracted with an organization to help lead us through that study so that we can do an analysis. I'm not sure what will happen with that. I've heard from other superintendents who have something other than Health Trust. They find that their premiums are higher, although the, it, the increases are less, but the premiums start off higher. So, um, that's where it's really important to do an analysis. You know, the other factor is the contract that, um, was supported for the support staff did provide an increased benefit in the area of health and dental insurance, and so that's having an impact as well. Special education costs have gone up $619,000 or about 11.82%. Again, what you're going to see, this excludes health and dental, but it is the wage increases, um, related to the, uh, contract as well as there are other parts of special education that have increased. Uh, the proposal for the part-time coordinator for the middle high is $71,000. Um, special education pairs, as indicated, that increase, um, we budgeted 52.90. We believe 58.53 is what we are requesting. Uh, the total cost for salary increases and additional paraeducators is $261,778. Uh, special education teachers, what you will notice when we look at FTEs for special education teachers, you will notice that it is, um, up to FTEs from what we budgeted last year. The reality is, uh, we had an opportunity to hire, um, two very talented beginning educators, versus hiring contracted service, so we took advantage of that opportunity. Uh, that was something we had discussed with the board last spring. And, uh, it was quite a cost savings, uh, from hiring, um, a contractor, uh, to do those, um, services. Uh, contracted services and out of district placements, um, we'll go through those, um, in a bit. I'll show you just the intensity of some programming. Now, the reality is small number of students are, have us in the millions of dollars in terms of providing programming. Transportation costs have gone up, uh, just over $214,000 or 12.71%. The reality is we are coming off year three of an extension. In that three-year extension, the reality is in order for, for students to be able to hire personnel, we've had to increase the wages. They have not, or they haven't pushed that back down on us over the last three years. However, now that we are in, uh, that process of needing to start over, um, those costs are going to be filtered down to us. In addition, um, our fleet is aging. Um, we're, you know, really, we're coming off of buses being eight years old. They start to break down, that is just a reality. Uh, we are looking to do a replacement of, uh, we need 20 buses to run our fleet. We need, we're looking to replace seven year one, seven year two, and then six year three. Um, so that has a significant impact. New Hampshire Retirement, here's a little good news. Um, retirement has gone down from the district contribution for both, uh, teachers as well as employees. Um, so, uh, teachers, uh, has only increased by $145 and employees has increased by $21,989. Again, I didn't increase, wages went up, that gets applied to the, the wage.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Sure. So the, the contribution has gone down, but wages went up because you, you are in year two of the support staff contract and year three of the teacher contract, as well as your non-bargaining staff have proposed raises.
Second question around which you were just talking about transportation and the need for 20 buses pushes the conversation because if I'm not mistaken, daily transportation for students in and out of our school system is being done by 11 buses.
Correct. So it, it works out, so there are 11 buses that do routes. There are, uh, three additional, um, vehicles that do, um, special education transportation. And then from there, we have, uh, three vehicles to do our, our athletics and charters and then the remaining are considered spare buses. You have to have some spares built in for.
Foods.
Yeah.
We buy, we lease, we lease to purchase?
We do not own our buses, first student owns the buses. But the cost of newer vehicles gets trickled down to you as the consumer.
In that number of 214,000?
Correct. That is the increase in wages and the, the vehicle replacement.
I'd like to see the math on that sometime.
I think, uh, you know, to be fair, Mary and I have talked about this a bit. In the transportation industry, not just buses or trucks and that sort of thing. During COVID and when things went wacky, a lot of companies went back to the well, even if they had a contract and said, uncle, we're getting killed out here. You know, it's kind of like when fuel went wacky, suddenly fuel surcharges came. These guys never did that, they just sucked it up until they got to this point. And so I, I, I would fully expect to see some sort of significant bump because this contract's eight years old.
I will say other superintendents and working in another school district, um, that year one is the big, is a big fight. People are definitely seeing 17, 22% increases because of that, that shift, um, in wages primarily.
I was just informed by Aetna that the prescription plan premiums will be 340% higher.
And we did cut for transportation last year, we reduced two buses. You know, what I will say is, um, you know, we do have some students with a bus ride over an hour. Um, but the reality is a much more stable system. Um, I would say we hit more of a sweet spot for their ability to staff. As well as I think when there is no ability to combine, it stops being the solution.
So Mary, is this, am I hearing this correctly, that this is the end of a multi-year contract or the beginning of a new multi-year contract?
Correct.
And is the contract eight years? I mean, what's the length of the most?
No, it will be, um, yeah, we had it being five years.
Five years. And are you, do you know in advance how much this goes up each of the five years or?
So we're actively in negotiations, but they have given us.
Yeah, rough ideas.
Great.
Um, for all non-bargaining and administrative positions, um, they have been budgeted at 4%. Um, last year we did 5%, um, this year proposing 4%. So regular education, um, beyond health and dental, the most notable increases are, um, really looking at, you'll see under regular education temporary part-time salaries. We are looking to do a $9,000 after-school program at Interlake Elementary School. So many moons ago, there was, uh, after-school, um, opportunities for some, you know, like maybe it was six weeks of baking or, uh, learning to crochet, things like that, karate. Um, so, uh, trying to see if we can bring that back. Also, uh, looking to have a homework club, we have homework clubs right now. We just, we have, uh, really utilized, um, some of our tutoring funds and stuff left over money from summer school. So we're trying to be more, um, deliberate about budgeting for that. Uh, same thing at the middle high school for seventh and eighth grades. So, um, want to really make sure we are promoting those opportunities. We also, we had done them as stipends in the past and they make much more sense to do as just, um, pay, hourly pay. Um, the middle high school, um, also, we have a lot of kids after school. Uh, $10,000 you'll see for after-school supervision. Uh, other professional services, um, things that, uh, you'll notice, uh, $10,000 for winter recreation program at ILES. This has been something parents have been asking for. We had put it in right before COVID, we were ready to go. And COVID hit and we've yet to be able to quite get that off the ground. Um, but it is, it is something that we hear from families and want to propose putting that in. Sandwich has the opportunity for winter recreation that is funded through the Sandwich Recreation Department. As well as the PUNBE Fund has purchased, um, Nordic skis and things one that month. So we are looking to get some funding to help support ILES to do that. Uh, $8,000 to continue the partnership with Prescott Farms. So there's a naturalist and residence program at, um, ILES. Um, and, you know, the net increase is just over 12,000. It doesn't reflect the 18,000 I just discussed with you, but that's because some other things have some lower costs because, um, when you do field trips, it's really driven by the number of students, so we've got some fluctuations there.
Have you deliberately moved away from the, the naturalists and residents and funding that with grants and donations? Or is that, we're not eligible for grants?
You know, we, we've had some generous donation, um, you know, we will continue to try to seek those. But at the moment, we don't have that and to maintain the program is 8,000.
Okay. What about grants? You've had, as you said.
We've had some local, um, the Geraldine Foundation has provided funding in the past. You know, we will, we will certainly make a request, you know, I can't guarantee. And see if we can try to nail that down between now and finalizing this budget. Um, Sandwich Central School has just a modest increase really, and that's driven by numbers for field experience. Middle high school, I'm, I'm sorry, seven and eight, um, slight increase, uh, reflecting the number of students to go on field experiences. Uh, high school has a slight increase, uh, Mount Washington Observatory experience at the high school level has been put in as a request. Supplies budgets have increased, uh, by just over $11,000. Uh, and that is based really on requests, um, from, from teachers as well as rising costs of goods. I want you to be aware, what I've taken out of regular education is furniture. Uh, $25,601, um, that's the exact. Um, we really value people and our budget, you will see, is primarily people. Um, and it may be a conversation to see if there's end-of-year fund balance to take care of any furnishing needs we have. The board has asked, um, that we look at attrition points. I want you to be aware of what attrition points are coming up in regular education. So Sandwich Central School has a classroom teacher retirement. Uh, ILES has a classroom teacher retirement. Uh, they also have a preschool teacher retirement. There's another classroom teacher and a world cultures, uh, teacher at ILES. I kind of, these are things for board consideration, you know, the board could certainly say, you know, it's natural attrition. We would ask that you don't, that you don't, um, fill these positions. I'm not recommending that, I'm just putting out there. And if that's what the board said to us, we have to figure it out. It's public education, you figure things out. Um, I have just put in green what I think is realistic. The Sandwich Central School teacher is, really is our bubble teacher in Sandwich. So we would be looking at potentially a class size of 40, um, which doesn't make sense. So I would recommend the board, um, allow us to maintain that position. Um, likewise, uh, an ILES teacher, this allows us to keep class sizes at a reasonable level. The preschool teacher, we have two preschool teachers. Uh, we have, um, more preschoolers than we can fit into one class. The reality is they're three and four-year-olds, um, the requirement is 12, you can't have more than 12 in a group. Um, you're also looking at kids with, um, high special needs in some cases and a varying, you know, varying degree of needs. Um, we could not do what we need to legally do without filling that preschool, um, teaching position. The next one, um, ILES classroom teacher retirement. Would like to propose that the board allow us to maintain that position, but shift that to an academic interventionist. Uh, the reality is we are trying to meet or exceed the requirements that the state and the federal government have set. The reality is, we are trying to meet or exceed the requirements that the state and the federal government have set for students to perform for the, in the areas of math, science, and English language arts. We have kids who are struggling and need additional academic intervention. Most of our academic intervention is structured in a way that we are doing early intervention, which makes a lot of sense, but there are realities. There's fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who equally are struggling. And having that bandwidth would be appreciated. It would also serve as a class size reduction teacher. So it's something that we would be able to flex. There will be bubbles. There may be a class, kindergarten class that's bigger than we expected. It would have to be a person who was willing to flex. So maybe that year, you're not the academic interventionist. You're the additional kindergarten classroom. Or the other part, when we have unexpected long-term leaves in the middle of a year, they're hard to fill. It provides a little slack to potentially do that. So I think it allows us some flexibility. So I want to request that the board at least give that some consideration. Could we make do without? Yes. I think it, it allows us to be stronger with it filled. The world cultures, I put as a board discussion. You know, this position has been one, it started off years ago as a Spanish position. And then there was time that it was proposed to be reduced as a Spanish position at the public hearing. People, the members of the public expressed really wanting to have really an opportunity for students to learn about world cultures more so than a particular language. And, you know, asked that the board consider that. At that time, that was the shift then to a world cultures approach. It is not a requirement by the state, but it is certainly something I think parents have expressed an interest in. And I know students have appreciated the opportunity to have those experiences. There may be opportunities for us to do some kind of experience, but not the same experience without a teacher. If we did not have the teacher, we can't provide the same exact experience, which right now is kindergarten through sixth grade has world cultures on a seven-day rotation. Could we provide some kind of world cultures experience? Yes, but in a different way and probably not to all grade levels. But I think that's probably getting in a little deeper tonight than maybe you want, but I just want to at least bring to your attention these attrition points that the board has asked us to focus on. Extended school year, this is a requirement by special education. So students who receive extended school year, it is in their individual education plan that they would have regression if they did not have ESY throughout the summer. Bilingual has increased, you'll see, and again, that is driven by need. The reality, students who qualify for bilingual services, they are assessed. That assessment tells you legally what you have to do in order to help the student be able to be successful eventually testing out of bilingual services. So we have had, we do have a bilingual teacher who works, who is an Interlake employee, but also Ashland purchases some time for that service. They are hard to find. And the way that we've done it with Ashland is we have done some ebbing and flowing. If Ashland, if we budgeted one amount, but by the time the year rolls around, the need has decreased, Ashland's not charged for that. Interlake's will generally has enough students to pick that up. Or if the opposite is true, then Ashland would pick up the additional costs. And we have had to actually contract some service to meet the needs of students. Vocational has increased by 70,000. That is related to the number of students participating as well as state funding. We never know what we're going to get from the state for funding relative to the UWIT program or the WINSWOM program.
Should be more students participating and less state funding?
So, so really, in this case, the student participation has actually, I believe, decreased from last year, but the state funding has.
Oh, right.
Is it reasonable to expect with some of the new offerings that that might increase again?
Yeah, I anticipate the WINSWOM offerings will be something that will be very attractive, particularly cosmetology, I think, is, is something that in my past experiences, that, that it can be a draw. The manufacturing, I think, although the manufacturing and the engineering program at the UWIT, will be interesting to see how those two play out. Co-curricular has increased based on really active, active co-curricular activities. Just a reminder, we do have an active co-curricular salary schedule committee. It's part of the contract with the, between the board and the Interlake Education Association, the teachers' union. And so we meet annually. We look at the schedule. We look at what offerings people are proposing, what might be sunset, what might be adjusted to where it might fall on the matrix. So that really is reflective of what is actively being taken advantage of. Similarly, in athletics, salaries really reflect our active programming. Really primarily, the major driver for athletics is about $18,000. And that is, we saw a change in our contracted service, an increase for athletic trainer. So we have an athletic trainer who is there for practices, there for games. It is, you know, an essential part of running a, an athletic program is having an athletic trainer who is trying to prevent injuries, trying to rehab injuries. We want our students to be able to be healthy adults and making sure that they have an opportunity to, to be in a good place to be able to do the various athletic events that they participate in.
Great. If we're looking at a, a, right.
Sarah, what are helmet covers?
Self-defense, yeah. Guardian caps. They go over a football helmet and they're said to reduce concussions by roughly 30, a little over 30%.
So it's while you're playing, you have this cover on?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a very pretty covering, but it goes over the entire helmet.
Okay.
I don't imagine it's a really old school helmet to have, kind of those external, um, um,
Yeah, they were.
Like pads almost. They look, they look pretty old school.
They were leather.
Hey, we're looking at.
Hey.
Leather pads.
He's not old enough to have a helmet like that. I am.
No, our, they go through like, what?
They actually, at the bowl games, college ball games, almost every time I'm in South Dakota, players, were three or four of them that had that shock absorbing air shell.
It's an already really good helmet.
I just had a question about coaches' salaries as well. It seems like we have, you know, we've, we've increased our pay for every single person in the SAU. Probably, I think we're losing money on our coaches. Are we bringing in the right coaches that are qualified in the right athletics, right? So like, say, boys soccer or women's volleyball, do we have sought-after coaches that know what they're doing and are teaching the kids? Or are they kind of teachers that are volunteering? Like, what's that look like in the?
So, you know, what I'm going to say is that the salary schedule, the actual, like, amount is set by the contract. So in the next negotiation, those amounts might change. I think we have a competitive schedule in terms of what other school districts are offering for pay. I think having the right coach always makes the program. And I think sometimes, you know, we are, are struggling to find coaches because it's, it, the pay doesn't really represent the time commitment. I mean, that is the reality, right?
I know firsthand.
Yes, you know firsthand. So that is the reality.
Secondhand, I guess, but.
You know, I think it's people who often have a passion for it and bring that to the table, have, you know, a skill set in a particular area. And you have people who are program builders and doing those things. You know, I think Sarah's worked hard to try to get those connections to the younger kids. And, you know, I think feeder programs, our football team, I would say, I think you've seen the, the benefit of having a middle school team. Like, I would say that was like a missing link for us. So I think it, you know, it can vary. And Sarah, I don't want to, you know, speak for you. I don't know if you have some things you'd like to add to that.
I, I agree. I don't think that the salaries drive who applies and who doesn't. Our, our district is kind of, I don't want to say we're at the top end, but we're far from being at the bottom end as well. It's more of a, a passion level and a commitment level and that sort of things, the balance. We don't get many applicants, however, I will say that. Very, very, very few. Even, even the big jobs, like the, you know, the ones that you think, baseball, basketball, football, but we don't get many applicants, so.
Why do you think that is?
I think it's just nationwide and it's in everything in this community.
Okay, so it's nationwide, but why?
Well, but, I mean, restaurants, grocery stores, like, everybody is feeling the same impact and it's.
But you've got to have the right, I mean, you've got to have people in your, who have that kind of level of skill and passion and commitment or not, right? And you're really dependent on that to some extent.
My, my, my point is, this goes, this goes back to the discussion of engaging with our local representatives and moving on to the state level. This is not the only problem.
We can certainly, Sarah is the president of the Athletic Directors Association. So maybe you can just ask, see if we can just gather a little information from the other AEs in the area. How many applicants they're getting when they have an open decision? You know, I think data is powerful.
Officials.
Yeah. Yep, so.
And I guess I was looking at this too, not even in my personal situation, I was not going to go into that area with that, but it's enticing the right candidate to be able to even maybe not take a second job so that you can have a practice, say, at 3:30 after school instead of 5:30 at night, right? So the kids have a better schedule, just enticing the right people locally to choose this job opposed to another second job, because most of, this is almost a second job, so.
And lights may help for at least the outdoor, you know, field sports. Because maybe rather than trying to do it in daylight, you know, maybe it's being able to start a practice at 6:30, which may be something that somebody who has a full-time job provides a little more wiggle room for them to be able to manage both. So that might be another potential benefit. Summer school, we've looked at actual expenses over the last year and so that's a slight decrease, but still being able to provide the programming we need to. And again, this, this is not extended school year. This is for students who are, have not reached their competencies and need some support, trying to meet their grade level competencies to have 12 additional days of learning in the summer. Guidance services has increased primarily, professional salaries have increased by almost 13,000 and that's just to a staffing change. So we had, we had a new director and then in that director position was a veteran teacher with certification in guidance who moved to that position. So it's just really the change of where people are on the salary schedule. You also will notice the increase of about $35,000 to support our Grown Roots partnership, which provides, again, the licensed mental health counselors in our schools. We do have, because there's some ebb and flow with the invoicing from Grown Roots because it really depends on, like, if students have health insurance. It depends on what that gap is between the cost and health insurance, like. So we anticipate, based on what we're seeing for billing, we may be able to, we haven't fully put the full amount in because we think we will have carryover based on some of those ups and downs, but still looking to maintain the same level of service. It just, it gets complicated with the way that, it's not like, it really depends on health insurance and what we're seeing. So, but our commitment is to provide the same level of service. Quite increase in secretarial. Again, that's really wage and health and dental. Health services, you'll see a change. Again, there's change in staffing. We hired a new school nurse this year for grades seven through 12, as well as Sandwich. Psychology, again, it's really staffing, I'm sorry, wages and health and dental, you'll notice. Just to remind you, we have two full-time psychologists in our district, one at ILES, one at the middle high in Sandwich. They, the district pays for one, the other, well, the district pays 50% of the costs of both and IDEA funds pay for the other 50%. So those are grant funds. We are also, the, the request was for some updated testing supplies. We plan to purchase those out of this year's funds.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Amber, but IDEA grant funds, those have been fairly consistent.
Those, yes, those are, those are fairly consistent.
As opposed to the state funding for special education, which fast leads and tends to be shrinking as the requests.
Correct, correct. So that is very different. So this is IDEA, which is the Individuals and Disability Act grant funds. They come from the federal government, down to the state, they get distributed. Those have been fairly consistent with what we see for the allocation we get. The state does have about $33 million that for kids who hit a threshold of about $72,000 in special education cost, anything over that $72,000, you can apply to that $33 million to see if you can recoup some money. What is being observed is the number of kids in the state that are hitting over that threshold has gone up substantially and that number has gone up, but the pool of money hasn't. So you don't get a dollar for a dollar. You're getting, you know, people are getting, seeing less. Speech N O T, speech has increased by about $33,000. Again, wages, health and dental. We also did not put in the budget. It was requested. It's an augmentative and alternative communication device. It's about $5,000. Our plan will be to purchase that out of this year's money. And again, why do we have some money this year? Some of our contracted services have not been able to be provided. So that allows us to utilize some of those funds.
What does this device do?
I will allow Mrs. Caladeta.
I'm interested. This is a communication device. So this is a device that will allow some of our students that are not able to communicate with us. It is usually controlled by our speech-language pathologist. They'll go ahead and input icons. They'll input information within it that are specific to that student. So it's not a device that is utilized for a variety of students. It is very student-specific, but it allows them to communicate. So if that student wanted to order lunch or if that student wanted to have a conversation with a peer, they would be able to utilize the icons on there and it will actually speak for that.
Great.
Thank you.
Does that $5,000 include training of the faculty member that has, has got to put it to use with the student?
So we, no, but our speech-language, language pathologist will train our staff in that. So that's where that is from. That 5,000 is essentially just the device.
And so not the maintenance train that goes along with it?
Correct.
Over, however many years, kind of, so there's a maintenance trail that goes along with it. Is there any way that we can capture that?
There, we've been very fortunate with the devices that we've had. And what, what tends to happen is sometimes that technology and students will age out of that particular device. So we haven't needed to make updates related to devices. We have needed to replace certain devices just because of technology changing or students moving on and, but yes, I can look closer to see if we have some more detail related to that, but it is minimal.
And speech-language pathologists, this is very much in their wheelhouse.
This is exactly what they do.
Yes.
Yep.
Recall, we have been trying to hire a speech pathologist. We were, he had a late resignation last, I guess it was June, June, right? It was June. The reality is other people. The reality is other people were under contracts. We are currently, you know, actively advertising. I do anticipate that our salary structure will pull somebody from another school district. I think that we will be in a better position. We have had to contract that service out, which has primarily been a remote service, with a speech pathologist in Texas. They, there is a live person present, but, you know, we prefer to have a speech pathologist onsite to do the work. Physical therapy and OT services. So our OT, we did have a change in staffing that is reflected in salaries. Other professional services in the OT PT is because we've had to contract some services to meet IDPs. We're just getting more students who need these services. We have two occupational therapists on staff. Physical therapy, we have always contracted. Technology services, you'll see an increase of just over $77,000. We've made some salary adjustments for our technology assistance. The reality is, we are competing with the private sector. We are trying to at least stay somewhat competitive for that, but that is a hard market for us. But it is a reality that we've needed to make those wage adjustments. You'll notice it's a big, big part of the budget, it is electronic access, and I'm going to break down in a little bit for you what that looks like. That's just over $200,000, but we have level funded that. One ways that we've worked to transition, one of our programs is to reduce costs, is we've used Essar funds to fund Schoology, which was our learning management system. Over that time period, Google Classroom has evolved, and so we will be using, shifting from Schoology to Google Classroom, which will have cost savings for us. In addition, we are looking to do some multi-year license for elementary-level math and English-language arts. We're trying to purchase that this year with some savings that we've had in other areas so that we don't have to put that multi-year license in next year's budget. Curriculum, this is the hardest-hit part of what I am proposing to you tonight, so this is not the same level of programming. It is consistent with what we did last year. We reduced $97,000, which really is in the area of our ability to provide, you know, in-district professional learning opportunities to support required trainings, to run a competency camp, which we have been doing every summer for our staff. What we would request is that the board would consider prioritizing this for end-of-year fund balance, which is what the board did last year, and it did allow us to be able to continue to do, you know, the important work of providing training for staff. Things that we've taken on is CPI training, which is crisis prevention intervention training. It's de-escalation training. We have trained staff members to be trainers of that, it's very expensive, so in this room, we have as trainers, we have Lisa Holliday, Amanda Downing, Mr. Boucher, and I think that's it at this, this table. But we have other people who are trainers as well, because we train all staff members. So it's, you know, that's an expense, but it is one that I think that we probably will have end-of-year fund balance so that we don't have to add to this budget, but if the board would be willing to, to make that commitment, it would allow us at least to be thinking from a planning perspective. Library media services, very, you know, not, a slight decrease, and that's really just a change in staffing, slight increase in books, and looking to purchase a new video camera for the Middle High. School board services have increased by just over $10,000. About 6,400 of that is for property and liability insurance, that has gone up. That's where it gets bucketed, property and liability insurance for the school district. $4,000 increase are for dues and fees related to the New Hampshire School Board Association, as well as criminal background checks. That's, again, just where we put the criminal background checks, part of our, our accounting. Audit services, slight decrease, and that's just based on what's anticipated for costs for the audit. SAU administration.
I'm sorry, good question. Ashlyn, you might not know this right now, but in terms of this year, how, can you tell us maybe for next time, what our anticipated legal fees are this year relative to the last two years? Because we had some significant use with not just negotiations over the last couple of years.
And next year will be a negotiation year.
But that can be a very controlled expenditure.
Correct.
Thank you.
SAU administration, again, that was, has just over $33,000, and that, if you recall, that decision has already been made. The SAU budget was approved back in December. And so this is the cost share for the Angelique School District. Office of the Principal, increase of $72,000 plus dollars. Again, most of that is some wage changes, changes in health and dental. Other professional services, you'll see in the Office of the Principal is almost $180,000. That is related to school resource officers, police officer details, and some graduation expenses, which, again, relate, I believe, to the details for graduation.
Just some clarification for Jim and Ed. So the school resource officer, that was a double whammy in the sense that we weren't charging appropriately.
Correct.
For the use that we did have, we wanted to true that up. But then, starting this year, we were fortunate, working with Meredith, we were able to add the school resource officer to all my current school.
And because that was a late, a late hire, it was last January, we actually have some of those funds carried forward. So next year, you will see a greater increase than this amount, but it's because we had those funds that were set aside. That is to be able to have the two resource officers, as well as the details we have in the morning and the afternoon for traffic, as well as when we have athletic events, when we have large things going on in our schools, we have these details that are, if it's outside of the school day, are present for safety reasons. Secretarial support, really that is related to staffing changes, so, what do I mean when I say that? So we had a staff member who was maybe in one of those positions who left, and maybe that person had opt-out for health insurance, and the person we hire has a family plan or two-person or something. Those create some changes. Or maybe that person comes in and has far more experience, and in order to hire them, we needed to make some salary adjustments. Auditorium, we are looking to ask for, again, you see like a 183.45% increase. Really, that's a $25,000 increase that we are looking to have in the area of replacement equipment. Our facilities are heavily used outside of the school day, that's a wonderful thing. Last year, we took in $41,000 in revenue for facility rentals, and main driver of that is the use of the community auditorium, which is wonderful. It is used all year long, and that creates some wear and tear, and there are just some things that are starting to, to look in need of a spruce up. So we are looking to do a reinvestment in the auditorium. So like, for instance, there's a tear in the curtain, so, you know, that's something that needs to be repaired. The stage needs to be repainted, you know, things along that line. So it's, it's just in need of some attention, otherwise it will, it will age more quickly than I think we would prefer. Facilities, jumping down to facilities, operation of plant is just over $44,000. Again, some drivers here are changes in wages, health insurance, dental costs. We've struggled to fill four custodial positions, so we're hoping to restructure, although custodial positions have decreased. What we're looking to do is shift two of those positions to a custodial general maintenance role. The reality is, you know, we have, we need people who can clean, as well as do some just general maintenance to support. Quite frankly, we have, you know, a ticket system that every day is somebody, you know, there's something that might be broken and needs, needs a repair that can be done internally by, you know, just general maintenance, not needing a high degree of skill, and looking to reduce two custodial positions. If these positions are filled through hiring or a contracted service provider this year, we would ask the fund balance be carried forward to continue that next year. So basically, we have funds set right now that we're not using because we're not able to hire those positions. So we're looking to reduce two positions, it will create some savings. At the moment, at the end of the year, if we haven't hired, we're looking to just see if we can carry those, that money forward. And either it will be carried forward to find custodians, or to continue what we are piloting, contracting a service to do some cleaning. So electricity has risen slightly, well, above, almost $12,000. Oil, propane and pellets have remained level funded. Buildings and grounds, Honeywell lease.
Right, just one second. Right. Do we get paid periodically for our electricity that we put back onto the grid from our solar array?
Yeah, we sell those solar racks.
So could we, do we anticipate more revenue because the price of electricity has gone up, or is it not that same?
I don't think I could calculate what we'd anticipate. It's been very consistent between 15,000 and 20,000 every year.
Thank you.
It is a, it's a seller, you can hold and sell when it's higher, or you can sell, but we have a company that does that for us. They try to play the market at the best-sell rate, but that rate is variable, so. I'd say for what we produce, that's generally what we revenue back each year.
Great, thank you.
So Honeywell, I'll turn to page eight. So right now, those leases are 500, just worth of $580,000.
Where are the, I'm not familiar with that anymore.
Sure, so, so that's our solar field, as well as our lighting. Do you want to talk about that?
Let's see, there's an awful lot. This is phase two lease, there's windows for the elementary school, all exterior windows were done, this is 2008 mark maybe, help me, 2008 this started? It's a 25-year lease.
We're talking the solar panels?
Yeah.
I thought it was way before myself, so.
That's facility after window.
This is a facility.
Energy.
Various things.
Right. Enough for nature, isn't it?
And it is a solar field.
I'll make you guys deliberate.
We're getting towards the end of it.
Okay.
We're in the last four years.
They have made some improvements in the efficiency of solar.
Right.
But not huge. Our electric bills go up, not because we have solar, but how does solar deal with it? Because there's another big decision coming under the operations of plant.
Where do we anticipate the end of life of those panels?
25 to 30.
Yeah, and from 2008, so we're probably.
Don't make it to retirement.
Yeah. We probably should be looking at a 10-year window of possibly needing to. A lot of those are still in trial mode. We were one of the first solar arrays at the time, it was the largest in the state, so we have early technology solar array. And, yeah, we've had it for quite a while now, so, I mean, there will be an end of life on that solar array, but.
That was Honeywell two.
No idea when.
I was confused because there was a Honeywell one that took place prior to the solar, and that was the recaptured ventilation system and the LED lighting.
Yep, some lighting scattered about. It's, there's a lot of it all over the district though, from these packages. And again, at that time, it was a lot of cutting-edge ways to reduce energy, that was a big push, and some of it worked like CFLs in Europe, you probably bought CFL bulbs, and now we don't buy those at all. And so we do have a lot of that early technology that's starting to kind of phase out from it, but a lot of big infrastructure was part of this to light the exterior windows. Those are much more efficient than what was in, when it was all packaged into this lease that will mature in four years.
From this July 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. On page eight, the Laker activity vehicle. Last year, we had proposed to lease two additional Laker activity vehicles. We received funding in the 24, 25 budget of $36,000 to do that, that would have paid for two leases. Fortunately, we were not successful in being able to find leases. As it turns out, probably the way to move forward is actually just to purchase one Laker activity vehicle, to actually just purchase it our own versus trying to lease. So we are planning to do that. We would like, we've been working on this since last February, and we do have the ability to purchase an additional lab that would have a payment of the first $36,000, this $36,000, and then an additional $36,000. So over a three-year period, we will have bought the vehicle. The lab has been successful for us. It really has offered, like for small sports teams, it's offered for, for some local field trips. It really does allow some flexibility, having two will let us be that much more, you know, ability to take more, more of a whole class versus needing to take a large bus. The capital improvements proposed, $65,000 in unanticipated repairs, things break over the year. The middle high school, we are looking to build off of the work that we did last summer that was Essar-funded in the area of HVAC. This, the boiler replacement, this is not in your budget, nor is the $300,000 HVAC. Boiler replacement, we have two boilers that are aged, and they are $1.2 million for the two of them. And one is at Angelique's Elementary, one is at the Middle High School. This is certainly going to be a big part of your conversations about the budget, potentially looking at, the board may want to consider this as a standalone or an article, and look at funding it over a number of years through either a bond or through commercial lending. We have been in conversation with a bond bank, as well as commercial lending. What I will say, I think, is attractive about commercial lending is you do have the opportunity to pay off early, which saves you a whole lot of money potentially in interest. The bond, a bond you cannot pay off early, it's a, it's a guaranteed interest for that organization. So we will have some, we have two organizations working to put together proposals for us that we'd like to bring to you next Tuesday. I'd also like to invite board members to come take a look at the boilers, we'd be happy to show you. This is, both Charlie and Mark were able to have the grand tour, so we'd love to have you walk it with Brian and myself. You know, the reality is, it's, it's beyond just replacing, it is taking them out, putting in new, it's also reorganizing that spaces, which have not been built, I'd say, rather efficiently in terms of being able to get into a particular area to do service. So that is part of it as well. You know, we would be looking to go with propane, and part of Mr. Swanker's planning has really established a propane farm at Middle High School to address that as well.
Meaning that we already have that infrastructure in place, so if we swapped over to propane at the high school, there's no additional cost for the tankage and most of the lines.
Is there a way to quantify, you know? Is there a way to quantify, you know, if you switch over and the demand is on propane rate, like the reduction of potential rates we would get per gallon, quantify the offset of the.
I can work on, based on our current use, what it looks like using propane for the proposed boilers we're putting.
Where are the oil tanks? Are they underground?
They're underground, yeah. It's not a large cost is just getting your underground.
Oh, yeah, EPA is all over.
Decommissioned. It is a very large cost of it to decommission. But owning that permit makes you responsible as well to maintain and replace tanks when EPA and DES decide we must. So sometime in the future, there would be a, you have to do another tank swap anyway. Whereas swapping now to propane, there's no permit for those. DES doesn't, they just, they don't care if they're in the ground, above ground, or anywhere. It's only to have some clearance from structures, so. It'd be good to get off of that oil, not just for environmental reasons, just even just of the school district, maintaining that underground oil storage tank permit is just a burden. It's monthly costs and, and really nothing changes. They're just sitting in the ground, but it just costs and then annually maintenance. Class A operator, it has to be a third party and we pay that monthly, you see that in the bills. It's just something that, it's kind of a win-win to switch that to that product.
And Mary, just so you know, you can issue callable bonds.
Oh, okay. When you say callable bond, I assume what you mean, you can pay it off early?
Yep.
Okay.
As you've talked about the boilers and so on and so forth, are there capital improvements in SES that need to be addressed?
We've actually already done that boiler a few years back. That was of the same era as these two other ones. And that one failed, I feel like it's three years ago now, but that one is now brand-new and it's a dual-stage, there's actually two boilers that work in stages. And if one would go down, we still have backup. So we're, we're safe and sandwiched with the boiler plant right now.
Okay, I'm just, all of the capital improvements that we see seem to be Interlake's middle high school and elementary focused, so are there no capital improvement program items?
I think we've actually completed.
There are always.
Exactly. That's where we're at the last couple of years.
I can get to you a most recent copy of the CIP program.
And you have a copy of that in your, yeah, in here. But I do want to talk about what's deferred because that's a big question. There are, yeah, there's 495,000 that we're suggesting we defer. The Homestead building, parking lot paving, we keep deferring that. I think.
It's going to crumble any day.
I consider it a good old Yankee, Yankee parking lot, but it's, you know, again, it doesn't, it, you know, it is certainly, you know, buildings, you have to take care of your grounds and all of that. But again, we're in the people business and maintaining people is more of a priority as well as the boilers are a big priority. Sandwich Central School, the multipurpose room flooring, that's 65,000. That was replaced within the last, I would say, nine years or so. It, you know, I would say probably a higher quality floor could have gone in at the time. Probably was what we could afford at the time. And it is certainly something that does need to be done, but we probably can, you know, realistically get another year out of that. Interlake Elementary School, some paving and sidewalk of 150,000, flooring replacement, which we kind of rotate depending on where the need is, 25 grand. The middle high school, a roof coating of 80,000.
Is that a completely new section? I thought we were.
No, just that coating that rejuvenates.
Yep.
And then one of the things that we were trying to do is have in the CIP just $50,000 for classroom furniture and equipment, you know. But again, I think this is something that end of year fund balance is probably a more realistic way for us to approach those kind of things. So other budget reductions to support boiler replacement is we've had in replacement of care grounds, replacement equipment, we've been carrying $125,000 each year for the last few years to just do as needed site work. And I think you can see the benefits of that. Our campus has never looked better, but we would remove that as well, all in support of the boiler replacement. Retirement incentives, or really it's newly termed recognition of service. However, from an accounting standpoint, UNICEF still sees it as a retirement incentive. There are three retirements and that totals just over $177,000. This is an increase of almost $58,000 from last year. Last year, we had two retirements. This is a contract obligation, so that is the reality. Retired employee expense total, so this is actually decreased. And the reason for that is the options available to retirees 65 or older have changed. And we did have several retirees move to the, to a lesser costing plan. But I think it's really important to recognize that one point, almost $1.3 million of our budget is to support retiree health and dental insurance. And I just say that because when you see the bottom line, it's important to recognize that this is a past obligation that has been promised and one that is, that this is financially responsible for, but it is about the past, it is about servicing current students.
We fell asleep.
Oh.
No offense.
No offense.
No. Collective bargaining agreements, again, just a reminder, you'll be in year three of your teacher contract, in year two of your support staff contract. Below, I won't read them, but you do have the expendable trust balances as of July 1.
That has nothing to do with encumbered or unencumbered territory?
Correct, correct. These are actual trusts. I'm going to have you turn to page 10. It's a tiny little page 10 in the upper right-hand corner. So I'm not going to read all of this, but this is, I just want you to know it's in your materials and it's about $1.6 million. This is when you look at special education and we look at our various contracted services. This gives you a sense of what those are and how much they cost.
This is just contracted.
This is contracted services for in-district programming. This is not out-of-district placements. This is in-district programming.
You've said before that we're supplying out-of-district services in districts though, right?
Correct, correct. These, we absolutely have built programs that are equivalent to out-of-district. So the next page is historical of our enrollment. So this dipstick is done every year on October 1st, so it happens to be on October 1st. We were looking at 913 students. And 176 of the students received special education services. And I think that's kind of an important piece to look at. In 2007, the enrollment was 1,200, but the number of special education students was 203. You know, you're looking at, you know, fairly close to that same amount, but with a much smaller student body.
Just so we're comparing apples to apples, special education, this number of 176, is that every kid with an IEP, no matter what level?
Correct.
It's everybody.
Correct. It can be a student who has an IEP for a speech and language issue. It can be a student who has autism in a very significant way. The next, page 12, again, is just, is just showing our enrollment over time, breaking it up by school. I think it's important to note that in 2018, we did reorganize ILES from pre-K to four to pre-K to six. And Interlake's Middle High School from five to eight to grades seven through eight. We are middle high school, we are one school, the state that will look at us as two schools. And it's primarily because we have different New Hampshire State Assessment tests. So you have to get two different coatings for your school. And that then makes for accounting. We have to break out seven and eights, accounting for the reports that we give to the state.
Maybe it's a typo, I don't know. But if you look at Interlake's Middle School in 2007, just to pick the first year, 344, down to 137?
So that's because, and so the 137 is just grades seven and eight.
And what would it have been?
2007, that would have been five, six, seven, and eight.
Got it, thank you.
So in 2018 was, that we reorganized so that Interlake's Elementary became pre-K to six. And then the middle school became seven and eight, and then high school was nine.
So that's when they made the shift away from middle high school or middle school principal?
Correct, yeah. Looking at our projected enrollments by class for next year, you have on page 13. So looking at what we anticipate, the enrollment will be in 25, 26. This also has other information that you might be wondering about, like ILES has 82 students who have IEPs, Sandwich has nine, the Middle High has 85, at least at the time of the dipstick. 504s, which is another, we are legally responsible for 504s. And so ILES has 35, Sandwich has five, Middle High is 53. So that's 93 in addition to the 176 of being, providing a legal obligation. You are signing a legal obligation with your 504 plans. Homeless at the time of October was 21. English speakers of other languages was eight. And vocational students, 37, between the UIT and the agricultural program. The next section shows you our free and reduced lunch history. So ILES is at 33%, the middle of, so the middle school, seventh and eighth grade is 30, Sandwich is 11, the high school is 25. Then you have the breakdown there, just in the graph form. If you turn to the next page, page 15, you'll have our overall district average compared to the state. So we are about 28% and the state is about 24%. That's interesting. The next graph on page 16 really breaks down our budget. We are in the people business, you have heard me say, Mark says it all the time. So we really, 72% of our budget is salaries and benefits, another 21% is contracted services. Well, guess what? Contracted services are primarily.
Absolutely, that's 93%.
So we're looking at 93% are based on people. And so, you know, books and other expenses and utilities actually make up a very small part of the budget. The next, page 17, actually it shows you basically that pie graph, but broken down to like salaries. You can see, you know, salaries and benefits up 6.45%. What are drivers within that? Looking at really the health and dental insurance is your main driver there. Looking contracted services is up 7.06%. Main, major driver there is more transportation as well as some tuition costs as well. Books, supplies, equipment is down, utilities is up slightly. Other expenses have stayed flat, grand total of 5.53%. The next page, page 18, we did go back to 2016. I think there'd been a request to try to look at it over, and folks, you see it right there. And I will tell you in conversations with other districts, we are not unique.
So we've basically doubled in the last eight years.
Our expenses.
I mean, that's like nationwide, not even just the district or the state or whatever.
It really reflects the needs of the population. And, you know, you are, you're feeling that in your budget. Your, your special education budget, in a little bit I'll show you, we look just at regular education and special education. Your special education budget is closing in on your regular education budget.
That's key.
So, so the next page, page 19, is just, it breaks out the health and dental to get to that increase of 710, so if you want to dig into that, have that available. Page 20 is the technology, electronic information access. So I want to really thank Mr. Parsons for organizing this. So that $201,000 that I shared with you, that you'll see in electronic information access, well, 43% of that is really our systems. These are, these are like our student information system, they're our school pass that we use, which is a part of our safety. You know, they're really things that, that we have put in place, run our organization.
They're needed items.
Correct, they are, they are part of our, our systems.
But they're also items that evolve rapidly. And in three years, what you've got doesn't fit, nobody talks to it.
But that is a breakdown for you to see, you know, some educational applications, how much are used for assessments, library media. So it just is a breakdown for you of that, where that $201,000 goes. Facilities, so this is another distribution, so not included in the budget, so not in, is the $1.2 million for boilers. Because if we put that in, this would look like a very different chart right now. We have held that out as well as that 300,000 for HVAC, you know, thinking that maybe a $1.5 million loan or bond would allow those to get accomplished. But, you know, you see that facilities, you know, when you kind of look, you know, we've been kind of steadily trying to support facilities. So I want to jump to the master budget.
Thank you. So just so you know, at our next meeting, we will have discussions tonight, we're going to have general discussions, but we will be making probably more pointed discussions, specifics a week from now.
Tonight, I'm hoping you just familiarize.
And if, and if you have any questions about this information, please contact Mary or Ashley.
Happy to sit down and go through it. That is, it is absolutely your, your mind.
A work, really. And don't leave it in the waiting room anyway.
There's no confidential information here, that I can assure. I just wanted to print this out, the blue page, I'm not going to go through line by line for you, but this is, this summarizes each of the categories. So like regular education, you can see what was voted in 2024, what was voted in 2025, what's being proposed in 2026. Special education, you can see what was voted in 2024, voted in '25, and proposed. And that's where, so.
Mary, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
Sure.
Just by voting '24, does that mean the '24, '25?
So that is the '23, '24.
Okay.
Yep, and then the.
So it's the end of year, '25?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then '24, '25, which is our current year, and then '25, '26. I just think this is a nice way for you to just look at over the years, the increases and decreases it's just going to do from the previous year. But I think looking at special education, you can see again, that complex. But I think looking at special education, you can see again that complexity. And when I said, so our regular education budget is almost 11 million. Our special education budget is seven. You know, those, they're getting closer together. But I won't go through a whole lot on this, you know, just tonight is kind of familiarizing you, certainly give you something to ponder. If you go to the white pages. So this has, so regular education, you'll see a number of the different categories that fall under that. You will have the increases to the right from the previous year. You also have, so you have, the first column is voted in 23, 24. Actual is what we actually spent in 23, 24. Voted for 24, 25, which is our current year, and then what's proposed. We don't have actuals for 24, 25 because we're still in the middle of it. But this is, if you take the summary that I wrote with Mrs. Dole, I think this will probably, you know, if you put it side by side, it will help explain when you see some increases. I don't want to, I'm happy to go through line by line tonight, but would you prefer to sit down with a cup of coffee and?
I think, I think we would go through this on that later.
Perfect. Perfect.
Having never done it before, trust us, you'll pick it up, you'll spend an hour with it at home, later on you'll pick it up again.
Perfect. So if you go, so those white pages are the budget, okay? If you then go to the, to a salmon colored page, group of pages towards the back of that section.
Do we, do we have this electronically? Like, is this sent to us electronically?
We can. We can get you. Would you like it in Excel or would you like it in a PDF?
Excel would be.
So, yeah, we can do that. Sure. So this regular, this table here, it gives, so what you have in the white pages, it's the summary of like how much in supplies. This tells you what we've requested, what those requests are. So this, if you want to get into needs, these are the needs.
And the number at the top, regular education, 11.
Correct.
identifies the specific line in the master budget.
Correct. So that, that's your category, and then you should have, then the like temporary part-time salaries, you can see the line is that. Does that help?
You call this salmon, I call it winter squash.
If you say tomato, I say tomato. All right. Going into staffing, that's your next tab.
Which column, which page?
Uh, it just says, after your winter squash or salmon. So this is, this shows you our staffing. So. Yeah. I thought it was something going on in here. So you have our FTEs for 24, 25, and then what is proposed for 25, 26, and then what's the net change? Okay? I won't go again. So you're going to see a 6.95 increase. So that's our part-time student services coordinator, as well as those changes to paraeducators. I won't go through that, but that's there for you. If you want a longer comparison, the page behind that. It says, that, then if you fold it out, that's going to show you over time what are by the various categories. So from 2019, 2010 to today, we've had an increase of 6.44. If you dig into that, you'll see it's in special education. So there's that available to you. There is also the next group of documents. Those are breakdown of staffing by school. I won't, won't go into detail with that, but that is the breakdown of staffing by school, by building, also which positions are grant funded. And then I will jump to CIP. So if you take your next tab, CIP. That's the capital improvement plan. So that's kind of what we tried to project out, what might need to be done. And you will see the deferments in that plan that I mentioned earlier. The next section, budget by cost center, I'm sorry, revenue, my apologies, revenue. So, probably premature to talk about revenue at this stage, but that will be certainly part of our later conversation.
A lot of turn offs.
Yes. Yep, before that.
Basically, we can't count on it.
Correct.
It's very much an estimate.
That's a very good take. The next one is budget costs by center. This is, if you want to look at what is the cost for Sandwich Central School, what is the cost for ILEs, what is the cost for the middle high? That will show you the breakdown within those categories, as well as the district.
And just because you will get asked, students' costs, per student. How does Sandwich frankly don't have ILEs?
So the, the way that that is done at the state, they do it by elementary level. So it's calculation, they have things that they do, there's a formula at the state because it kind of equalizes what's being compared. And so they do that as an Interlake School District by elementary level and then by, do they have a middle school level, Ashley? And then high schools. Yeah. So I can certainly get you that. That's a new report that just came out.
Oh, no, I'm also.
It's a report that just came out last, I think, Thursday.
It's just rarely do you see it put in print the way it was in the Laconia Daily Sun.
Was that, oh, you're talking about the letter to the editor?
Yes.
Okay. And so let me pull up a report that just came up from the state. I will, I will get that.
But they, I mean, they were actually making the same comment about special ed costs moving up dramatically and all of that. And the issue of size in the Multan Borough comparison was pretty well thought out piece.
So the board has, so for your, your budget meetings, so your next meeting, I would anticipate will be a longer conversation, more details.
What we talked about, Mary, the leadership meeting was, at this meeting, scenarios we may not entertain. So what would a sub 5% budget for nine, what would a 1.5% budget be like? What would a 3% budget be? Which I thought was extremely helpful going through this. I'd be interested to hear from the principals and Lisa. If Mary came and said, you know, we're looking to cut $500,000 out of this budget, what would be your reaction? Where's that going to come from? Because I don't see a lot of extra stuff here myself.
You have thoughts? I would like, I would like to, again, go back to an organizational chart. There's been a lot of changes in number of heads.
Yeah.
And that makes the answering the question you want to answer much, much harder. So some kind of macro view about how we are staffed, specifically on the administrative side.
Yeah. So we certainly, we have that broken down in here, as well as I will send you the actual board charts, which are on our website.
Take one and pass the other.
So here, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the principals and directors. I'm sure everybody.
Take one.
But the reality is, if you said 500,000, we have to cut some programs. That is, that is the bottom line. The only way to get that kind of reduction is reducing people and probably would be reducing, is there a program that we would be looking to, to, to recommend to the board? And so what we did is, we do have like this table for the board. So if, if you've said, you know what, we want you to bring in a 4%, that is 500,000. If the board has a place you think you would like to land and you would like us to start working on that, that would be helpful to know. I think what I would ask is that it's not an exercise, like gee, what would it be to get to, to the 2.83? Like, what would that look like? Only because that puts our people in ups and downs.
So you're looking for a more general guidance of saying, cut everything you possibly can that does not affect programs.
That.
You're not going to get much.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Enos.
Or, or, I mean.
Well, except you can cut positions. I mean, that's the other thing.
Correct.
But you can't uncover the program. So they're all.
Are you, you're looking for us to say, we want to be at 4%, so get there?
I, I think.
More direct like that?
Yes. I, I am looking for some direction. What I would prefer that it be a realistic direction versus an exercise of trying to get to, as I said, you know, I'm going to do the extreme, the 2.83 is, is about a million dollars. That's pretty, that would be, I think everybody would agree, that's pretty extreme. That will send our staff into a lot, like it just, it creates a lot of angst for people.
Mary, isn't that the approach we took last year, though?
We, we.
We said 3% or whatever, and then you all scrambled to see what we would have to change.
And then, you know, it was too close to the bone and we didn't go.
Right.
There. And again, that did create some swells for some staff members. It's just, you know, we will do whatever the board is asking us to do. I just want to just, I guess, put out that it does create an emotional ride that we put people on.
So given the fact that we're doing a strategic plan, I, I, I would encourage us to think about saying, five years from now. You know, this is an enormous budget for the number of students that we have. It is. If we said five years from now, we want to be, for example, back to the 24, 25 budget, how do you get there, you know, gradually? Because it does require either reducing the number of staff.
Increasing class size.
Keeping salaries flat, which I'm sure is going to happen in the next negotiations. Like, you know, changing programs, restructuring things, whatever, but these are the experts. So we give them, you know, I, I did a dramatic, you know, five-year statement, but I think the board can look at this and say, we want to get to X in five years. And, and we want it to be a budget that's reduced in size, right? So, and, and we can say FTEs, we can say program, we can say, you know, again. But I would encourage us to think about that kind of an approach. So we don't have to do this every year and say, you know, okay, now we want to be 3%, so you guys find.
But we have this for this year.
We do.
And we need to give Mary a thought. And Mark and I have both given, I haven't given you my comment, I'm happy to do so afterwards, but Mark has. What do you two think? I mean, not to put you on the spot, but what, what's reasonable for this year? Because what you're talking about Nancy, I mean, you're absolutely right. It's like, you've got to have some runway to try to have whole school change. I mean, seems to me.
That's, that's our job to do, is to set that direction. I mean, if we're talking about next year, you know, we can all probably see some places here and there, but. Yeah. If we're giving, if we're giving, you know, if we have to do it this way this year, you know? I don't know. I haven't had a chance to look at it enough. I got the notebook tonight and listened to this, so I'd have to think about it.
You know, we can certainly, the board has a meeting, so.
The 21st.
21st, and then there's one on the, sorry, the, I would say then we're looking at scheduling, I would say another one probably on the 21st, I mean, after the 21st, maybe the 28th, a week off, a week away from that. We left that open just against the board.
Right.
So I think, I would say people need some processing time. Then I would just suggest that the January 28th, that there'd be an additional meeting.
And processing time in addition to processing this before next week?
What, I think it's between tonight and next week, being able to dig into the book, to be thinking about, is there any reduction, is there a number you want us to look at? Because we'll need time to prepare for that.
Time to think about it.
So I think on the 21st, the board may say, you know, we've had a chance to go through all this, you know, maybe it is 3% we want you to get at. So between now and, and the 28th, please bring back.
But to Nancy's point, you, you need to answer the fundamental question. Okay, so how are we going to do that? We're going to get rid of one math teacher at every school.
Correct.
And get bigger classes.
Correct.
That's a big deal.
That's terrific.
Correct. Which is why the board has been offering like natural attrition. Again, what I would propose is some of the attrition that we have is in the right spots.
So I, I don't know, my, it, it's just hard for me to, I, I can't say $300,000 and have any sense of what that would mean. If we said to all of you. You know, where would you get, where would you get savings? Where would you get?
We would have to, we would have to bring cutting teachers.
Well, could you not like look at, you know, I look at this, 1.3 million dollars that are health, dental insurance, and special education. So I guess are we, like, I guess I would bash it on this one, like, have we, we've looked and exhausted all options on our health and dental? That is what it is. There's no reduction in benefit here yet, right?
It's contractual obligations.
It means cutting heads. And as a parent, and I don't want that, right? I would say I don't want to lose staff in our school looking at this. I need more time to probably look at it. But the reality is, is that I think you've given us excellent bullet points to then go out and, and talk, which is what our job is, to people in the community and figure out if this is correct and are we going to get support for this? Maybe we don't need any help.
When was the last time you did?
We have done reductions in the force. We did that in, I think it was a few years back.
Prior to you.
No, it was during my tenure.
Really? I would have guessed. I remind the basic math of 72. At 7%, your costs are doubling every 10 years. So when you start looking at long strings of years and the early part of the 2000s, we had some 8, 9, 10% year over years, as you can tell. More recently, under Mary's tenure, we've been much closer to 5. Doesn't sound like much, but compounded over 20 years, and it's a lot.
And it's all, pardon me, sorry.
So there are also kind of blanket things that one can do? 10% reductions across the board. What would that look like? You know, I mean, there are things you can't reduce, you know what I mean? Control over like health benefits, the contracted salaries. So that doesn't leave you a lot, but, but, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I think there are approaches to this kind of thing that just say, you know, if you really had to think about this for next year, are there programs you could do without? You know, certainly the, the cultural studies, whatever that class is called, is one that we wouldn't have to replace.
It wouldn't be a reduction of a person, right? It'd be a reduction of a position, but there is a natural attrition.
Right. Anyway, I think there are just approaches to think about this without us saying 3% or 4%. You know, if I had to say it, I would say, you know, four and a half or something. See if you can do that. See if you can cut, what would you do? And if we said, we're going to, we're going to then decrease more the following year, more the following year, more the following year.
And I think it's, there are many things that are intertwined.
Yeah.
Collective bargaining is a significant piece of this. Last year, the support staff, that was about 700,000 year one, which when you do a warrant article, it's not factored into the.
Right.
Operating budget until the second year. This year was estimated to be over 200,000. So between those 700 and 200, you're almost a million dollars. You know, it's, it's just, it is, it's, it's, the, the challenge is, the district has been incredibly supportive of providing meaningful wages for people. I do worry that we're at the point that those meaningful wages are going to come at the car. I do worry that we're at the point that those meaningful wages are going to come at the cost of programming for students. And, and the cost of special education is going to come at the cost of programming for regular. So I, I don't think these are unique tension points. I think probably every district is feeling this. What I'd like, you know, we as an administrative team, we will sit back down, we'll sharpen our pencils, I guess, and see if there's any suggestions we can bring forward for your consideration next week. But again, I'm just cautious of going without, you know, without more direction. I think what we'll do is we'll look at things that are non-staff related, maybe at that point. And then I think next week, if the board feels that there's a desire to go deeper, we can, between the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth, bring back staff recommendations. Does that seem reasonable?
I, I personally, I think we're at a perfect point in time. These things are all coming together nicely. To Nancy's point, you know, we, this board shouldn't just be making decisions about direction in the vacuum. We have a strategic planning process. We have, I don't, so I don't think, and to Jim's point, I agree with Jim. I think if you just got this under five, I think that's defensible. And I think at the same time, let's, let's take that attrition piece, the world culture piece, because it's right there in front of us. And let's put our toe in the water with that and try it out and see what that looks like. Cause you're gonna get close to two hundred if you get rid of that position, you're gonna be like one fifty-ish.
So what we will plan to do is try to get under the five. We will also bring forward a plan of how we could still provide a world cultures experience and what that might look like. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, what about transportation too? Like if we're adding another Lakes, like an L A B or whatever you call it, right? So we're only one of those. We have eleven bus routes, we have twenty-one buses, three for sports, three for special education, I think was.
Twenty buses, just, yeah, so.
Okay, so say we're, is there a way to shave off some of the transportation costs? Or do we not need those extra costs?
Um, we can take a look, I think we could possibly, I think sharpen our pencil and take a little deeper look at maybe some of the daily experiences that special ed is providing. If we can maybe build in somebody able to transport. I think we could maybe eliminate some contracted service there.
I didn't get to finish my thought, which was, though, the other piece is the strategic planning. We'll have gone through that by this time much prior.
Yep.
So then we'll have some community, some true community feedback, like, you know, tell us, yeah, the cost per pupil, we gotta do something. Okay, we'll do it. Or, no, this is going great, our SaaS scores are through the roof, you know, whatever.
And I think getting broad representation is really important, and that is going to take the board's help to do that. Like, we, we need to be reaching as many people within the community. Because it's hard, we put things out there and we get a small handful, and.
And Mark, you and, you, you and Lisa have always talked about taxpayer concerns, particularly from Meredith. And I, I think that voice needs to be in this conversation.
Oh, it will be.
You know, and so, what was the other, oh, the other thing I was gonna say is that, you know, I don't know if I'll be involved with the negotiation team, but next time, but I feel like we're in a much stronger position right now because our support staff contracts were woefully wrong, you know, I think just wrong. They're now much stronger. The teacher contracts, I think, are so padded, and I, you know, personally, I would say, you know, there are things in the contract, it's either fewer teachers and more in the contract and higher pay, or not as big increases, or some changes in things that have been in that contract probably for many years, so that we can get that more in line. You know, I, I am all in favor of paying our teachers high, really well, so we have a really competitive district and can get the best teachers possible. But I, I really think there, look at the size of that piece of our pie. And it really is a, a decision between how many teachers do you want? And how high do you want the pay to be, which also then affects the program, right? So I think there's a, you know, now that we've got our support staff in a, a much better place than we had before, then I think overall, the message is, you know, we're, we just can't continue six percent increases or five percent increases or, I, I don't know, it's just, anyway, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but, and I probably get to hear about it tomorrow because this is on the public forum, but, but I, I sort of feel like, you know, that is the choice that we have to make between the pay that teachers have and the, not just teachers, but employee pay and, and program and staffing, right?
So I think what I'm hearing the board say is, let's try to just get it below five to come back next week. And also looking at the world cultures in terms of how an experience might be provided, although it may look different. And.
Field experiences, Mary.
I'm sorry.
Field experiences.
Field experiences, again, that has been a long, you know, a passionate part of the school district. You know, here's what I'm going to say, about almost, you know, thirty percent of our students are pretty reduced lunch. Field experiences are incredible life, life opportunities. I think it makes us a unique district. Are, are they required? No. I, I think that they have, have really provided invaluable learning experiences for our students. And I think the growth that we see from those experiences is something that we're really proud of. I would prefer not to see those go. I, I think if, if the board said get to four percent, that might be the conversation. You know, are you letting go of field experiences to maintain a staffing position? I think those are the hard, those are the things that we're then like this.
And if we don't do what, what Nancy just talked about, every year, we're gonna be doing literally the same thing over and over and over again. Cause just the, the cost of living, the cost of benefits are going up. So every year, it's gonna be like, well, get rid of that, get rid of that. The reality is, we need the, the five-year.
Right, but the feedback may be from the public that those are important. You know, they have been considered an important part, does the public still consider that important?
I mean, again, if you go back and take a look at that strategic plan that the town is now got, moving into a form, this, this is going on everywhere. We have to find the productivity tool in education. I don't know where it comes from, and maybe A I is gonna take a big part of that. But I speak for, but I speak for Meredith as the only person on the board, from Meredith at this moment in time. They got spanked on their tax bills, massively so. And it's gonna have huge socially, factors are gonna get dramatically affected. We're average age fifty-five, we don't have kids in school. So I suspect, and I, that's why I push for a slightly lower number. I'd like to see, you know, what if we did do something on the field experiences, one or two, just to see. And the only trip I ever took when I was in school was to home.
And you'll see on the.
And you walked in snow for five miles.
The salmon sheets, the salmon sheets or the winter squash. You will see that the cost of those field experiences are, are spelled out. So you'll see what it costs to go to Cape Cod, what it costs to go to the Mount Washington trip, what it costs to go to Maravista.
I mean, it, it's an interesting point in history, if you've been watching the news, and I'm sure you have, as Los Angeles burns. Los Angeles doesn't have property insurance. They all walked out when the state capped their property insurance. So you just can't get it, so three to five, ten million dollar homes, unless you've got a lot of change in your pocket.
So you suggest we get budget insurance?
No, I was playing with the thought of, what could you and should you think about self-insuring?
Yeah, but the other end of that, Mark, is that they also didn't clean up their sagebrush and they had all that.
Oh, I lived there in twenty-two years.
I know exactly. Over grow, it's eventually gonna catch on fire and burn.
It was, it was, it was very cool.
I think we have enough direction. And what I would say is, can the board agree to meet on the twenty-eighth of January?
We're meeting first, a week from the day on the twenty-first.
So, yes, it's the twenty-first.
Yeah.
That meeting starts at five, five o'clock next Tuesday.
My problem is we're meeting June, or we're meeting March, or mid-Fbruary. The budget here is on the bed. We have, so we have to. At the latest. So hopefully we can.
If, if you're scheduling meetings, yes.
Yeah, I think we'll try to, to choose your meeting.
Okay.
So I believe the twenty-eighth, I mean, as, as a tentative.
As tentative. Okay, great.
The other members of the conference. Jim, Jimmy, you're not paying attention.
No, it's sitting next to Mr. Hilger.
It was relevant.
Are you, are you good with keeping the twenty-eighth as a tentative date?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, any other business? I'm sorry, I gotta close public comment.
I have a question.
I closed public comment, sorry.
Actually, it's a request, and I have three questions. One is the request to meet facilities to address the fact that people still park because of the two-way parking now in front of the school. People still think that first line is all parking. So I don't know if there's a way to put absolute signage out there that says no parking, or maybe supply cones or something. For people like us, we can block off those spaces so people don't park there. So that's probably the request.
There is stuff we can put out, and then we do have signs out, but that's never been parking.
Not stopping.
That's right, but it's never been parking, and it's never stopped anywhere.
And we deal with the situations, so I would have the cars move.
Maybe the question is, well.
We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We'll take a look at it.
The other is on the healthcare thing, which they get you over a barrel one way or the other. Seems like there's no negotiation here. But I have, I have a question, I didn't realize each S A U is responsible to healthcare. I thought Health Trust was a New Hampshire thing. But it sounds like each S A U has a choice of what to do.
Yes, so you can, there's health, primarily there's Health Trust, School Care, and inter-local.
So of those, do we know, for example, someone, another S A U that has Health Trust? What, are we paying the same per capita premium that another district is paying? So it's, there's so many factors that go into that.
So a big driver is the health of your group.
Okay.
So if you can.
And age.
Um.
Space on.
And that's a, that's a, that's a.
Yeah, so the claims, so maybe it's.
Lot of insurance.
It's nice.
Well, it's, it's, it's okay.
I guess my, my simple question, my simple question there is, it still seems like each S A U for him or herself. Is there a way to do a collective? Can we partner with three other S A U's? In other words, can you lower the premium as you have a bigger pool? I, I don't know the answer, but.
So Health Trust is a risk pool, and we are combined with, again, the S A U office, Ashland School District, Interlake School District, the Town of Ashland, and also the Town of Center Harbor. So that creates a bigger pool for us individually.
So it's already big-ish for us, so adding Miss Gorma Laconia is not gonna tick the scales for me.
Right, and we wouldn't.
It might think it worse.
Right, we wouldn't do that, I think we have the option to add the towns. I don't necessarily know that we have the option to add the other S A U's.
We'll explore it during our exploratory, to see legally what, what kind of things might come into play with that.
I, I'm just curious, again.
So that will be part of that health study. What I will say is, you know, we're looking, you know, we wanna do the health study. I'm not, I don't think that we're gonna find Panacea. I think health insurance has just gotten really expensive. And, you know, I think there'll be those questions, you know, probably back to what's cost share and things like that. I, I think those will be factors.
Can you tell us again, tell us again what the family of. Yeah, what's the advantage of, yeah, I just remember in my last piece, you and I have talked previously about this, about the retiree healthcare benefit. That's contractual and it is what it is. Does it say we have to offer a very specific thing? Do we have options to drop it to some basic level? You know, so there is insurance, but it doesn't have to be the catalog plan, as we used to call it years ago?
So there, you know, what I would say is there is some consideration for what is required. And I would say that's a, a legal conversation that is underway. How contracts were written, how they are interpreted. So I, it's a little, I'm not really able to give a direct answer because I would say it is in process.
Cause I know you mentioned before, it's gonna take a while for the attrition of the retirees to get to a manageable level. We're still looking at years and years worth of.
Yes, as I said, that's one point two million dollars that.
Just now.
That, right, and that's a decrease because there were two offerings, and one of them was less expensive. And, you know, that certainly has been reflected in the budget, but still, one point two million dollars is a past agreement. And I, I say that because not every district has that, so when people compare us to somebody else, you gotta factor that in.
Yeah, just.
That's how it's all work. And may, may I answer you?
No, I was just gonna ask again with the family benefit costs right now.
The total premium for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget was about forty-two thousand for a family. That's the total premium.
Could be husband, wife, and one child.
Right.
Which, just, I looked, I looked at that number, actually, we have sixty-seven people on that.
Amazing.
It's almost three million.
Right, right.
The other thing that didn't get touched on is the biggest driver in your health insurance is, how has your group's health been in the last three years? You could have identical town side by side, where one town had a couple of cancers on their staff, one didn't. Big impact. And that lingers and it comes down as time goes forward. First, do you have any other questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parsons, do we have anybody else?
No, sir.
I have a closing public comment.
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two, thank you very much, Jim. All right, so upcoming, we discussed this, but just to clarify, our next meeting is next Tuesday, the twenty-first, at five P M. And then Thursday, January thirtieth, well, we've also added an tentative third meeting on the twenty-eighth. That would be at five P M if we have it, but that will be announced next week. Twenty-eighth is one day of the week, Tuesday.
Okay.
And then on Thursday, January thirtieth, I hope most folks are able to come. We're having the ribbon cutting at the middle high school. Lovely new sign, thanks to Mr. Athenas. And then we have the big show on February fifth, our budget hearing. And then another regular school board meeting on the, on February eleventh, where that's the last time we would have to vote on our proposed budget and warrant articles. But we could vote on them earlier at the budget hearing.
Correct.
Potentially.
Yep, the board has done that in the past.
Right. Is there any restrictions as to how many people will show up and allowing you to do that? If you've got two members from the public coming to the school board annual meeting, voting on a budget.
It's the will of the people that come.
All three of them. Well, remember that year during COVID.
Yeah, that's why I wish I remembered, yeah.
All right, any other comments from board members? Thoughts? Any other thoughts from administrators? Madam Superintendent, do you have any closing comments?
Thank you for a lovely evening.
I will adjourn the meeting at eight oh four. Thank you all very much.
Somebody get them.
Mary, happy to see you.
Oh, Nancy and Jim would like to visit the boilers, would you like to see boilers?
I think I'll pass.
Okay, Jim, would you like to see the boilers? You don't have to.
Potentially.
Would you like to schedule that time or see where you are next week?
Yeah, I'm there to just kinda check in.
Okay. Before you leave, I just.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Just signatures, thank you.
That's it.
All good?
I bet I'll be paying my daughter the best of the kindness.
Oh. Eight o'clock.
She's like, well, I told her, I told her I'd be here at seven, so.
I mean, I didn't even know.
Oh, it's fine. She's with Mrs. Nessman. She probably, they probably are giving her free dinners.
Thank you.
Yeah.